Really?
You were like talking all the time.
Yeah.
All right, let's go ahead and pick up where we left off with our capital improvement budget.
I think we're going to do the audit.
Do the audit first? All right, just kidding.
Get that one over with. I think you've met Joel Hauser before from our external audit firm of BKD.
Thank you.
And this is our chief accountant Clint Mercer.
Yep.
And they have a near final annual financial report for fiscal year end of June 30th of 2021.
Okay, and if you want to leave an extra one right here, I think we're going to have a councilor join us at some point. All right, thank you.
So I was just going to give just a quick update on where we are audit status wise. I know Clint passed out a draft of the financial statements. We're not going to go through these in any kind of detail since we haven't looked at them and this massive amount of numbers and information. But audit wise, we're close to wrapping up the audit. Our team is out here, I think this week is probably going to be the last week, so we do an audit of the financial statements. We do an audit of compliance for the, your federal grants and federal awards, as well as this year, we're going to do an agreed upon procedures engagement that's required by the FTA for the transit system. And so those three pieces are ongoing. At this point, we plan to issue a clean, unqualified, unmodified opinion. We've got no significant issues, significant deficiencies or anything like that to report to the committee. And overall, the audit has been going very well. There's one new accounting standard that had to be adopted, which is GASB 84, and it's around the way fiduciary activities are handled, mainly the 401A plan and the retirement plans. And really, it's just, it's cosmetic changes as to where they show up in the financial statements or whether or not they do. So there's, we don't expect any changes to yours overall, but they're, we're still evaluating some of the standard language. So if that changes, we'll definitely let Anthony and everybody know. Single audit wise, we're moving on the single audit. One of the things we, I've discussed with Anthony is with, with all the federal funding that has come out, we, we kind of as a firm, the, the single audits, I guess back up, the single audits are due to the federal audit clearinghouse by March 31st, nine months after year end. Last year, we had some, some issues and concerns around the CRF money, the CARES Act money, and some of the, the very loose guidance that was out there. Well, this year, it's the ARPA money that's out there. Federal government still hasn't issued final rules on that. We, we hope and anticipate, they've kind of alluded it maybe January of 2021 before they get those out. And so we're holding off as much as we can on finishing single audits until that guidance gets released, just to make sure there's nothing, I mean, we would hate to issue something and then the regulations come out and throw kink in everything, and then we have to go back and restate. So again, they're due at the end of March, we'll definitely get them done by then, but we'd like to hold off and see how that language gets, gets issued, assuming it gets issued in January. But with that, I'll pause and see if anybody has any, any questions or any, any concerns.
This is one I love to see no one having questions or concerns about.
It is, it's usually a good audit sign.
So best of luck with all the one-time federal fund stuff coming in and waiting on guidance, I'm sure that's a challenge, but.
It has been a nightmare.
Final rules are supposed to be out in August, so I hadn't heard of this latest delay.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're already five months late and, and everybody's waiting to, waiting to spend the money. Most people have already started, we did find out and they did come out and say that they're not going to punish anybody if the rules change and they've already began to spend the money under the interim rules.
Okay.
They at least came out and said that.
One would hope, right?
That's kind of what we were thinking.
Then after ACOG today, either, you know, more money coming in with the infrastructure bill, I'm sure your work with compliance with the FTA is ongoing for quite some time.
Yes, it's going to keep us busy for a good six years, I think.
Job security.
Yeah, this is definitely a good busy with all of these funds coming to municipalities.
It is, it is.
All right, well, thank you so much for being here today.
You're welcome, thank you.
And that unmodified opinion, a clean opinion, is a big deal.
Yes.
And we're very proud of that, and Clint and his staff has done a great job to, to get us there.
They have, especially with the implementation of all the new systems, that's not a light task.
We appreciate it.
Sal, thank you.
Okay, so moving on or back to the capital budget, and Kim is actually staffing the Public Safety Sales Tax Oversight Committee meeting right now, so I'm, I'm sitting in her stead. But this is where we left off in the presentation on Tuesday. This slide is showing the recurring projects, and this follows those guidelines that you saw earlier, 27% for capital outlay and so forth. And again, this is just a proposal, but, but this is where we would kind of slot those funds for next year's capital budget. Council can of course change them at any point in time. We did suggest, for example, more money into the bridge program this year, and so that's been baked in here. But if there's anything that you wanted to emphasize or de-emphasize, just let us know. Some significant projects that are, that are coming up in this current fiscal year, we've talked about the Porter Street Skate project and the James Garner project, you're going to see some, some dirt flying on that project here very soon. I saw a bunch of pipe out there today, so I'm assuming that's, that's sort of the prep work going on there. Municipal complex, Brenda may have more detail than I do, but we're moving forward with the asbestos removal. The work on this building is about to start, and I think that she would tell you that the council chamber is going to be unavailable for about a six-week period in there.
Can you give us those dates along with an update with the asbestos, please?
Sure, they are actually into the removal phase of the asbestos, I mean, they've done all the pre-con and everything that they had to do. Still on schedule right now for what they initially anticipated, which was going to be about March, February, March, before they're finished with that. I'm still hoping that they pick up pace, but it's pretty tedious work. This building will begin, they're starting, you'll start seeing mobilization stuff in the next couple, three weeks with porta potty and things like that, but from December the 15th until January the, and now we have a little bit more time, that'd be great, through January the 17th, these two rooms will be out of commission, the chambers for sure. The study sessions that are, that may fall in that timeframe, we will do in the multipurpose room. We are, as we discussed earlier in the week, we will be switching that January 11th council meeting to January the 18th, since all that stuff's coming back with rear portionment and the mayor will be out of country on a work-related issue during the week of the 11th, so that'll give them a little bit more time. We may actually have to, because of the product delay or for the, I was able to actually work in new chairs in the audience, new seating, which was, I really wanted to do because a lot of those seats are kind of like broken or sagging, and the lead time for that certainly will be past that time, I think, so we may, when we first, first couple of meetings back in the chambers, we may have to use the gray chairs for audience seating.
Okay.
But I don't think that'll be that big of a problem, but they will begin in the chambers in this room, their new carpet hearing loop, obviously this lighting issue we've had going on for about a year now is getting corrected. A new podium that is ADA accessible with a lower section for those in wheelchairs, the seating changing around to allow some handicapped seating down front and some on the side where it swings out differently, since I'm able to replace those other chairs, so you'll see all those improvements in the chambers. This room basically is carpet paint and lighting stuff going on.
Okay. Councilor Hall?
Just one question, I know at one point, we also talked about, I love the idea of the lower podium, but we also talked about, would be ever, be able to accommodate like a table for staff to sit?
We're doing that as well.
Okay.
Forgot about that.
Okay.
It'll be more just of a piece of furniture kind of thing, and then we'll have wireless mics, and we'll have ability for, I think, maybe four staff people, those that have the most, excuse me, items on the agenda that night, take, seat that table so they won't have to get up and down as much.
Yeah, I think that's such a good improvement.
Looking at Sean and Anthony right now.
I love those days when I get to do.
And you'll just get to sit there and talk on your mic, it'd be great.
Okay, awesome.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Moving on then to the Public Safety Sales Tax Fund, which does have some major ongoing capital projects in it. We've closed out the radio communication project, moved the remaining money from that project over to the Emergency Operations Center project. Council hired ADG, and this is where it gets confusing, because remember that the architect for that project is ADG out of Florida.
Oh.
Council hired ADG out of Oklahoma City to be the, the project manager, as they have been for the Norman Forward projects and some other things, but we're trying to get that project moving along faster if we can, so the $9.5 million of ARPA money has been transferred and appropriated and available for that project, so there's about $17 million total that'll be spent on that project and, and a groundbreaking, we hope will be early in 2022.
Anthony, I can add just a little bit of update on that. You will have an item on your December 14th agenda that will amend, amend the ADG Florida Groups contract to finish the design piece, because right now they've just got up to schematic on this current design. And then the first meeting in January, the 18th meeting, we will hope to award the CMAR contract for that project, so they'll be starting to roll.
So here's the fire apparatus program that is ongoing. This year, we're, we're looking for a new fire engine that I think is already undercontracted and being built in Ohio, I believe, so that'll be delivered sometime in the spring. But that's an ongoing program that's part of the PSST critical capital needs. Moving on to the Norman Forward Fund, these are projects that have been recently completed, Rotary Park, Ruby Grant, the main park project is complete, we're just about done with the football fields at Ruby Grant, and the skate park, as you know, is well underway and well, Here are some projects that are either under construction or about to start, the Griffin Park project, the, the next phase of that will be coming up here pretty soon, the project managers are here, if you have any questions about these. The Young Family Athletic Center is well underway in the bidding process, we've gotten some good news and bad news related to the bids about that, we'll talk about that a little bit more later when we get to, to the general fund. The Reeves Park baseball is ongoing, there was just a new, one of the neighborhood parks has been done recently. We're continuing with what used to be my favorite park, Cherry Creek, which is one of the upcoming ones. I talked about James Garner, the Senior Wellness Center, again, we've had some good news and bad news related to the bids and the guaranteed maximum price items that'll be coming before council. And, and again, we'll talk about that a little bit later, but, but the proposal that we'd like to, to, to come before council with is that we would use some general fund money to close the gap in where the Senior Wellness Center and the Young Family Athletic Center bids have come in a little bit above where we have budgeted funds available right now.
Can you define a little bit above?
A little bit above is going to be a net of about $800,000. So from a general fund perspective, where we are above all of our budget projections for this fiscal year, it's affordable. But, but we do want to keep those projects moving forward, we don't want to cut out, for example, the gym part of the Senior Wellness Center, those sorts of things that we would have to do to get back in budget if there were no assistance from someplace like the general fund.
And the timing that Mr. Francisco's referencing is, is where we're seeing costs in most of the categories of the bid packages that have gone out, in, in most of them, we're, we're right at budget, we're in really good shape. The steel package, it came in high. We recognize that with the infrastructure bill being approved, that we anticipate prices and timelines for delivery on products like steel, they're going to go nowhere but north from here, so our ability to roll and lock them in and get it done is going to save us a lot of money, we think, in the long run. So we are fortunate.
We're working really hard to try to have those before you at the November 30th meeting, so.
Councilor Hall?
So the $800,000 is for both projects or just?
Yeah, it's a net, there's, there's some things that were high, some things that were low, but. So here's some pictures of some of those Norman Forward projects that have been done or really close to being done. I've always thought that sun looks like a mushroom cloud, but that's just me.
Ruby Ram.
Who took that picture? Some things coming up in Norman Forward, the next phases of, of the Griffin Park project. One thing I would point out here on the new trail project, some of that money, and the Financial Oversight Board has received a presentation about this, but, but there's, a lot of those projects have already been paid for, we've gotten grants for some of those, so the proposal was to transfer some of that money as well to close those funding gaps in the senior center and the, and the Young Family Athletic Center. So it's about 1.2 million of that that'll be coming before council as a proposal to, to reduce that project and increase the budget for some of those other projects. I guess that's all of the highlights, you see down there at the bottom, that overrun due to the steel prices that Daryl was talking about, but we have identified some ways to close that gap, and we hope that, that council will consider that here in the next few weeks. Again, just a couple of pictures of those two big projects, but again, they're going to be just a wonderful asset to Norman going forward. Those questions about Norman Ford, I'll move on to the Room Tax Fund, not a whole lot of new action related to that, you'll recall the bond issue that we did backed by Room Tax funding to help to close that gap in the, in the Young Family Athletic Center, so that's been done, and that money is, has already been appropriated. Moving on then to the ARPA money, these are just the areas that council has designated for those funds so far. You see the top three there have, have been appropriated, and those projects are ongoing. The Affordable Housing Project, we really don't have a final say on how that will be used yet, but that's the kind of area that council designated that you wanted to use those funds. The same with the nonprofit support. My understanding is that there's been some changes in the 718 Porter project, but again, council has identified right now about 1.8 million for that project. We know that all of these things are eligible, and again, as we move forward with, with identifying how those funds will be used within those categories, what council will see is appropriation items as we're moving forward with finalizing what we're going to do within those categories.
When is our next meeting to discuss this? Because things continue to change, we know that Variety Care also wants half a million dollars, as does Bethesda, so, and then, you know, where there might be changes again to 718, so when, when is the next update on how we proceed?
Clerk, if we consult our master calendar.
As far as the nonprofits are concerned, I know that we're, we're, we're working on some sort of an RFP so that those, those firms can formalize their proposals and actually formally ask for the money, whether it's Variety Care or Virtu Center or whomever, we do want to have something in writing, and we do eventually contract with them.
Okay. Brenda, can I say something?
That's what we discussed a little bit, and Catherine can jump in here too with EDAB on some of these entrepreneurial type grants as well, but because you keep getting additional letters, I continue, I think you're going to continue to get them now that they've heard about these, you, you may want to discuss, instead of designating it to specific people already, just having an application process and setting aside your 1.9 and seeing where it all goes, and maybe everybody won't get their 500,000 that they want, but they might get 200,000 kind of thing. So we do have some study session time in, trying to do this from the top of my head, now on the 11th, we will, I mean, you won't be here that night, but we may have it on the 4th here, I can't remember what I have on that night, of January.
Charter and minutes.
Oh, that's right, charter and minutes.
Plenty of time to discuss that, let's move that back.
But we also, we could do it on December the 21st, I don't think I have anything slotted for that night, thinking that may, some councilor may already be leaving, but we would just have to do it in the multipurpose room, so I think that option's still available.
Okay, well, I'm good with December 21st if we have more information, and like, if we don't have stuff from EDAB, then it's kind of not.
Well, EDAB's is on the entrepreneurial part.
Yeah, well, we have an update on that part.
Your next meeting's in January, so.
So.
Yeah.
Well, if you feel there's enough to update, I'm good with December 21st.
If not January.
Yep, okay. Councilor Hall?
Yeah, just so to follow this through a little bit more, yeah, I think the, where we left it with that 1.9 million for nonprofit support, are you talking about RFP for that piece or the entrepreneur grant piece or both?
Both.
Okay.
They'd be separate RFPs, but yes, similar processes.
Because I thought we were going to consult with the United Way possibly on the nonprofit support piece?
As a potential facilitator, because they have a wonderful outreach and background, they do an incredible effort in the world of due diligence, one of the things EDAB did discuss on the entrepreneurial grants was their recommendation, and, and I did have this conversation with council member Peacock who put that particular item on the table, was that an investment in incubator space would provide you a much longer return on that investment than one-time grants and the money's gone. So not really having a location at the time that conversation took place, that would be part of the conversation we would bring back to council, and now that there may be, may be some other interesting uses for 718, that may be a location for such a thing. The other locate, address that came up as a possibility was the, the old library that we'll be talking to the school district about tomorrow, so.
I think it'd be neat to see something on Main Street or at least in that area, and like a Mother Street Market type thing that they have in, in Tulsa, it doesn't have to be as restaurant focused, but it'd be neat to know, this is the place you go to see the newest businesses in Norman type thing, so.
Okay. Yeah, I love the idea of that active street front and all that kind of thing, so yeah, I think, I mean, I think the value in holding off is really going to be paying off because we do have a lot of moving parts with lots of different important issues to the community, so yeah, I think we certainly underestimated, you know, the other needs in the community and having the ability to have other nonprofit agents, agencies being able to apply for what we have allocated currently, and we may see that the need is greater and we might shift some of this around, so I'm, I'm looking forward to having that conversation, and I'm glad we have a more formalized process to even the playing field for everybody.
So as we move forward from this date, here are some things to just keep in your mind of, of, of projects or, or unfunded needs sort of thing that we have just on the radar screen. One is that I-35 corridor study that's being finalized, and, and Sean was talking about this really interactive process that they have for gathering input for that, but, but we know that Norman's interchanges at Robinson, Rock Creek, Indian Hills are all on that program, so, so we just want to have our, our say-so in there. A lot of things related to public transit. Lot of things related to public transit. We've talked a lot about the bus transfer station. I think we've kind of more so honed in on that Porter location. There is the ongoing need for funds for replacement buses. They've done a really good job of getting grants for upgrading some of those buses to the electric-powered buses and that sort of thing. But just, that's a big old financial item going forward. Down there at the bottom, you see the purchasing land for the stations as we move forward with the Regional Transit Authority. One of the things that they have talked to us about is just to be aware of the need for thinking in advance of where those stations will be and potentially changing the zoning for just where the railroad tracks intersect with Highway 9 or with Cedar Lane or with Tecumseh. And perhaps rezoning that so that those, everybody knows that when those stations open up, the land use really changes and really explodes right around those stations. And so, you want to get out in front of that, and this is one thing that they talk about.
And I'm all for getting out in front of it and being prepared. But if we don't pass the sales tax part of RTA, then it doesn't happen because we have to pay for it somehow. So, I'm hesitant to start buying land until we have a little more.
And Madam Mayor, on this slide, when these original challenges were identified, we had a lot less certainty about what the infrastructure package might look like. And we think there will be several of these categories that will qualify. And now we're all waiting together to see what those guidelines look like and how we can approach. But once again, because we have a wonderfully prepared staff, we are shovel-ready. We are very competitive when it comes to getting dollars like this.
Yeah, I mean, bridge replacements, sidewalk gaps, a lot of it, I think, will definitely be in the infrastructure bill.
Even public transportation. It would not surprise me that there's a great deal of access for upgraded buses and maybe even station stop type dollars.
I mean, I really wanted some of that to go towards RTA, but it's not firm enough, I think, at this time for it to be a solid recipient of any of that.
Even the RTA board has said that yesterday in their board meeting. Move as fast as we can. We may not be ready for the big bucks. We'll see. It's not out of the question. But as you said, we've got a lot of design to do. Cost estimates are due in January. That was exciting news we got yesterday. So, we'll start to see some real numbers, both in costs and rates and all that sort of thing. So, we're moving as quickly as possible. But yeah, the question is, how fast do they roll out the transit dollars for big new systems like that?
Stormwater is an area of emphasis in that bill. We know that for a fact. So, we hope that that'll be, because it qualifies under the statewide revolving fund program. We know that, we hope, that that's an area that we qualify for some funding.
$60 million worth?
No, not $50 million worth.
That's what I'm looking for.
So, that's really all that we have for this presentation. Going forward, based on your input that we get today and over the next few weeks, we'll prepare for the next capital presentation on February the 15th. But the areas of emphasis have kind of been identified, and we'll respond to any changes in that. But just, at this point, we'll just respond to any questions or project requests that you may have.
I don't have any at this time because there's so much up in the air. So, it's hard to know where to, you know, drill down on, so.
And we're not projecting a surplus anyway, right?
Yeah, we're not as negative as we hoped earlier. You saw in the presentation, you saw where we have a plan for how we're going to address those things, particularly in the bond issue projects. But yeah, there's not a whole lot of money to play with in the capital.
And that's another study session we should build in. Once there is guidance from the infrastructure bill, we need to start talking about that, so.
Your priorities will be our priorities in the application process.
And we, I mean, I don't have anything scheduled past the 4th of January with that. And so, I mean, when that does come in, whatever we have scheduled, you know, we can always pump stuff around when need to, just for urgency.
Well, it was a week ago that it was two weeks until the guide comes out. But as you just heard, it's five months late on something that's already been distributed. So, really hard to mark a calendar for that one, but okay, we're aware of it. Okay. Any questions, Councilor Hall?
Oh, yeah, I did have a question about the Young Family Athletic Center. So, I know, you know, the steel prices have gone up. So, I think we've asked this question before because I think we had steel for the Senior Wellness Center too that we took out. So, have we talked about changing material?
You're talking about the steel panels on the outside?
Or is this?
This is structural steel. We can't take it out. And there was some structural steel that was taken out of the senior center and we kind of re-brought back on.
Okay, so it's not the steel panels on the?
No, not steel panel. We actually took the steel panel, we eed those out of both projects quite a bit.
Okay, so we just have to deal with it?
Yes.
And then?
And to kind of just speak what Anthony was talking about, when we did still did, they came in about $800,000 more than what we anticipated, just on the steel alone. Other things came in right around where we thought they were going to be. And there's, CEMET came in quite a bit lower than what they were anticipating. But there's also the big unknown besides steel out there in the market right now is HVAC systems. And there's two problems with everything that's kind of going on with putting these buildings together. One is your labor force, that, you know, we're trying to hire contractors out there. There's so much work out there that they're spread thin, and they can be very selective on bidding processes. And then, two, the materials are also very low for both steel and HVACs. And so, we're desperately hoping that a lot of that gets adjusted before we take that bid.
Kind of hoping that, you know, with our sidewalk program and the contractors you were talking about, there's so much business, might as well stick with Norman. We're building a lot right now, so hopefully that will work in our favor with locking down people willing to work with us.
There'll be a lot of interest in that and EOC.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
They're a big, huge project.
Yeah, between this one, EOC.
Hotels under construction. I mean, there's a lot getting built in Norman.
Love to hear it.
Private and public.
I would recognize, you know, nobody's talking about it, but there's a major sidewalk project going on.
Right across the street.
That's going to make my walk to the bus stop.
That's all we're doing.
Thank you.
Here to serve.
Anthony could have plugged that in the budget anytime.
I just, all of a sudden, it's working.
Well, I think that's all we have for right now. Thank you so much. And as always, I appreciate the creativity in both applying for grants but filling gaps and moving things around to make sure that the train keeps moving forward, so.
And I, you know, as you mentioned, there's just so many moving parts right now and so many pieces of the puzzle that, you know, we're trying to fit together. And I am so interested in seeing how the infrastructure packages come forward because if we get solid funding for all of these priorities, then that frees up other resources to address other things. So, it's, I mean, what a opportunity. Yeah, very, very exciting, so.
Well, we're also applying for a lot of that infrastructure money on some of these projects that we may be able to, if we get it, we can take that upper money out and put it for other uses.
Something tells me the state won't be doling that out for, I'd say, a couple of years at this point, unfortunately, so.
They're going to have billions and billions in applications to wade through and evaluate. So, we're hoping to have our applications in by mid-January. And, you know, there's, there will be thousands of applications on the table.
And I hope it'd be if we've already had to move forward and, you know, example, the EOC and that 9.5 million, maybe we could get reimbursed with that afterwards, so I'm hopeful on that front.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they're going to submit the application.
Okay, awesome.
Yeah, because I, you know, I keep holding out that we might be able to allocate more for nonprofit support because they are doing work that is so necessary that they need to be doing and we don't need to be doing.
I agree. So, it might also be helpful to send out to council the list of all the things we're applying for from state funds, so we know.
Each department is assembling the list based on the categories we are aware of being eligible. And we should have all those project summaries delivered to Mr. Francisco's office by the third week in December. And that'll be the opportunity for us to put it together all in one spot for council.
Perfect. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Francisco. Okay. And we're done?